of tonight's candidate forum for the Northfield City Council seats. My name is Helene Hopple. I'm the current president of the Northfield Cannon Falls League of Women Voters. So I just want to thank you all for being here and especially thank those of you that were here for the first forum, too, for sticking around. I want to read the mission statement of the League of Women Voters because it ties in very specifically what we're doing here tonight. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. And a big part of that mission is doing as much as we can to educate voters ahead of time, giving them opportunities to hear candidates at candidate forums. And I think especially at some of these more local elections, it's harder to get information on the candidates. So we are very pleased to host this forum here tonight. I want to thank a couple of people. I want to thank our timekeepers, two young women from St. Olaf that are helping out with doing the timekeeping tonight. I want to thank our voter education committee, especially Jean A.G. and Terri Stedt, who have done a tremendous job with just a lot of our voter education activities and registering voters this fall. And tell you that we will be doing some other forums, candidate forums, on Saturday. Saturday morning, starting at 9:00, we will have, first, we'll have a candidate forum for school board elections in Northfield. Then, following that, we will have a candidate forum for the Rice County Attorney slot. And then, we will have the last candidate forum on Saturday will be this congressional district, the second district in Minnesota, we'll have a candidate forum on that. So come by Saturday and get some more information on who you want to vote for when you go into the voting booth on the 4th. Mary and I will be collecting questions, so if you have questions, write them on these little cards. If you don't have a card, raise your hand. We'll get you a card and a pencil. And we will first have some questions that were prepared ahead of time and that were also used in the first forum tonight, and then we'll do the questions from the audience. I want to introduce our moderator for tonight, who is Marty Mix, who comes to us from Golden Valley. She's a trained league moderator, and that's kind of been our policy lately, to use league-trained volunteers, but to have them from outside of our own community, so that they have no dog in the race, so to speak. So without further ado, let's get on with the show.
All right. Thank you very much. As I said at the earlier forum, I couldn't believe what a beautiful drive it was through downtown Northfield and the fall colors and the businesses and the ambiance. It's just amazing. So you are lucky to be here. And I am happy to welcome our candidates, Joe Gejer and Suzie Nakassian, who are both running for the Ward 1 position on Northfield City Council. And the candidate who drew the straw to answer the first question is Suzie Nakassian. And we will begin with our first question. And each question has one minute to answer. Why are you running for city council? And what experiences have inspired you to run for city council?
Actually, you answered my first question when you talked about how beautiful and unique this community is. I was fortunate to move here in 2002 with my husband, who's a professor at Carleton. And I just feel so fortunate to have landed here. I raised two children here. And it was a very easy thing for me to quickly get involved in community boards and in volunteer groups around the community. I think what inspired me to pursue further government was just the more I got involved in volunteer work than on boards and commissions. It's sort of a natural sequence. You kind of want to go deeper and deeper into the process. And that's what I've done and which I've enjoyed. First, working on the Environmental Quality Commission, and then the Planning Commission, and now as a member of the city council. All along the way, the engagement with our intelligent, engaged, interesting population have inspired me to stay at it, and I hope to continue for a second term.
Thank you. Joe Gejer.
Thank you. For me, getting into, getting involved in city government, running for city council starts in a similar fashion. For me, it's all about being part of the community, and it's more than just living there. For me, we moved to town in 2003. Prior to that, the community we lived in, Way Park, Minnesota, I actually got my first taste, if you will, of being involved with local government. I was a member of the Parks Board there for several years before we ended up relocating for work. But since being here, again, it's been a lot of the similar story as Suzie's, being involved in the community. With me, it started a lot with youth programs first, but eventually worked into where I'm currently sitting on, the Planning Commission. My largest involvement also is, outside of politics, is with scouts, where currently I work as a commissioner that has regional responsibility over the three county area for support.
Thank you. And our next question, and we will begin with Joe Gejer. What should be the relationship of the council and the Economic Development Authority? What should be the focus of the EDA? For example, should it be manufacturing, distribution, technology, or new startup businesses?
All right. I'll start with the relationship piece first. I know there's discussion at times around whether the EDA should continue to exist as a separate body, or it should exist, be taken over the function by the city council. And I'm the opinion that the EDA needs to stay as an independent body. And one of the drivers for that is, city council, at the end of the day, are people that are elected locally. And that election does not necessarily tie them to something where they've got a good, strong business understanding, where they can be advocates for economic development. The EDA should be providing a leadership role within our community for trying to bring in businesses. And as far as the focus, the focus should be on bringing businesses to the community that can help expand our tax base, not necessarily looking at any one particular area, be it commercial or industrial, but looking at how we can fill all the various gaps that we have currently within our business community.
Thank you very much, Suzie Nakassian.
And how much time? I'm sorry, is there?
You have one minute.
Oh, goodness. The relationship, it should definitely be one where the council is providing the guidance and the EDA, letting the EDA do the work of the economic development. The priorities for the EDA, I think, are very well articulated in the Comprehensive Economic Development Plan that was passed in 2006, reread again, and reaffirmed. It lays out a really beautiful, very timely matrix for what we ought to be working on, and includes business retention and development. As Joe has rightly said, that's our absolutely top priority. And then it also goes into specifics about having studied the economy in the region, the state, what are the most promising industries for Northfield. Is the council, I have a lot of economic background, economic development experience because I worked as a business liaison to United States Senator, and I've worked with corporations organizing national fundraising campaigns. I, I'm sorry, I'm, oh, that's so funny. I'm sorry, that's funny. I was like, thank you.
All right. We will begin this next question with Suzie.
Yep.
What do you see as the biggest challenges facing Northfield?
The biggest challenge facing Northfield is economic development. Because of the amount of land that we have in private ownership of the colleges, are great partners, but they're not contributing to the tax base. We have an obligation and a real need to expand our tax base. I think that's where my mind got caught up, just on that last question. I had two ideas. So the need to go after the goals established in the Economic Development Plan are absolutely critical. I was a part of a small subcommittee that helped to get the EDA back on its feet by sorting out almost 20 pages of contradictory bylaws and balancing them down to four, which made clear the role between the policymakers and the EDA, the city council and the EDA. And have since then worked on closer relationship between the council and the EDA. I hope that if we continue on that track, we will begin to see Northfield realize our potential for economic development.
Thank you. Joe Gejer, same question.
Sure. I would have to agree in that particular instance with Suzie, that I believe economic development is our biggest challenge right now. I think we've got a couple of things that we need to look at before we can actually truly feel like we're pursuing it very well. One is, the city, I believe, should put its focus on ensuring that we've got the support that we need with respect to staff. Right now, we don't have a full-time staff person that's working with the EDA. However, I would also say that we need to look at removing some of the barriers that I believe we currently have in place with respect to some of the elements in our land development code, which currently is something that the Planning Commission, of which I'm a part of, is currently looking at reviewing the commercial zoning districts, C1 and C2 for the city, and looking at streamlining it. Right now, we've got a document that, though it has some good elements in it, is not very user-friendly whatsoever, and on top of that adds a lot of elements to, essentially barriers to wanting, having businesses that want to have to deal with that coming in.
Thank you very much. Now, this, by the way, to the candidates, if there's any time you want me to reread the question, feel free to. Given the economic and ethnic diversity of our population, what role can the city play to ensure the inclusion of all Northfield residents in the life of the community? And we will begin with Joe Gejer.
All right. I think we, with respect to involving the diversity in our community, I think we do, we need to continue looking at some of the items that we are currently looking at but don't, haven't necessarily moved forward with really well. Connectivity, I know, is a large issue for helping to create some equity within the community. And one of the items that we know we were looking at, regardless of where you fell on the side of the discussion, was the trail, Tiger Trail. But that wasn't the only thing, nor do I believe it's the only thing that we can do to help with that. I believe we're currently looking at helping to provide some connectivity options across the highway on the north end of town, up near Maltech, as well as some other issues, opportunities downtown as well, to help create that. And I think that's the first part, is helping and field part of the community.
Thank you, Suzie Nakassian.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Given the economic and ethnic diversity of our population, what role can the city play to ensure the inclusion of all Northfield residents in the life of the community?
I've been very active in Northfield in trying to widen the bridge to our ethnic communities in residence. I think the three ways that come to my mind that we can do that, first is definitely, as Joe said, connectivity. One of the reasons why we were so fierce in trying to pursue the Tiger Trail was to restore the connection between the northern residential communities, the downtown and the library. Unfortunately, that project turned out to be viable, but we're determined to continue to find ways to connect, because it's the section of town where most of an ethnic community reside that's most cut off from our facilities downtown, including the library. The second resource I think the city can do to assist ethnic, participation of ethnic groups in the life of our community, and you mentioned economic, economic well-being or development, is support of the library and support of connections that, from the library, that help to advance educational opportunities and jobs for all community members. I also think the investment in the Link Center and modeling integrated leadership on our boards and commissions is a goal we should go after.
Thank you. And we'll begin with Suzie Nakassian next. The council previously had liaisons to various city committees and commissions. Do you think that the policy should be reinstated? Why or why not?
That's a really good question and a project I hope we'll return to in the next term. I enjoyed being a liaison to commissions, and I do think that we should find a way to restore them. But we need to have a wider conversation about the boards and commissions and their role in relation to the council, more than just depending on one, liaisons are great, but there's a imbalance, depending on who your liaison is, how much time they have, how good they are at reporting back. So I don't want to rely just on that one thing. I want to look at, what is the, how can we formalize the structure so that liaison, we have the liaison, but we would also have goal setting on the part of our boards and commissions, where the boards and commissions give us ideas for the council's goals, and we integrate those ideas into the goals that the council sets. And then, we institute a situation where we're actually hearing and meeting with each one of those advisory boards twice a year. We've started to do the latter, but we haven't done the former. I would like to see the commission goals better integrated into our own council goal-setting process.
Thank you. Joe Gejer, same question.
Sure. While currently sitting on one of those commissions, speaking to it from a member, I would like to see some more connection to our counselors at our meetings now for us. Whether that's actually a liaison or not, I don't think it's necessary to formalize it, but what would be good is if we had more participation, if you will, even from an audience member perspective, with respect to council. With one exception, the only time that we've seen people from the council has been, in the past year, has been either at the joint work session that we've had with council or at one of the open houses that we've had, which is unfortunate. But the other thing is, lost my train of thought there, too. Must be catchy.
The eclipse.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. But yeah, we'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Our next question will begin with Joe Gejer. Many Northfield citizen groups have projects that will benefit the community. Some request various forms of assistance from the city council, including funding. What procedures and criteria would you recommend to the council for the consideration of these requests?
Well, I think we need to, as a city, I think we need to sit down and formalize a policy around what we would accept, what types of things are we willing to give, so we can create a certain set of expectations for these groups, too. The risk we run by not having something in place is, we create the potential for a free-for-all, everybody coming in asking for something. There's only so many things we can give out. The other thing, when we're looking at giving to various groups, we need to also look at it, not in just the framework of how it's going to help that group, but how's it going to help the larger community? Because at the end of the day, it is the taxpayers' dollar that we are handing out to these various groups, and it should be something that not only has that very narrow benefit for the group, but it does benefit the community in some real fashion, be it something that's going to help provide some additional economic benefit, or something that helps to beautify the community, whatever that other thing may be.
Thank you, Suzie Nakassian.
Repeat how you put the question.
Sure. The question is, many Northfield citizen groups have projects that will benefit the community. Some request various forms of assistance from the city council, including funding. What procedures and criteria would you recommend to the council for the consideration of these requests?
Thank you, that's helpful. Yes, I think my answer is very similar to Joe's. I think first and foremost, the council has to be really clear about its own goals for the governance of our city and what we want to accomplish around the community. By being clear about our sense of perceived needs, and by the way, that's a list of needs that's informed by our very significant engagement with community members, with groups, civic organizations, and our business advisory groups. Taking in all that input, we develop a slate of goals. Then, when groups come to us, we can see, do they, do the goals of what the group's trying to do accomplish what the city's trying to do? And is there a work, is there an opportunity for a partnership? Beyond those clearly, those clear collaborations, where a group is doing something that clearly furthers what we're trying to do as a city, I'm pretty hesitant about the role of the city in funding private initiatives. I think the city has our, our work cut out for us in terms of basic services and infrastructure for the city. I'd like to see us develop a policy that gets clear about what we do and what we don't.
Thank you. And the next question, we'll begin with Suzie Nakassian. And the question is this. What do you believe is a viable resolution to the dilemma of a desire for a business park, but the lack of city funds to support the installation of the necessary infrastructure?
Well, I think we have a very viable solution, and I'm very pleased that in the last four years, we've begun to pursue it. And that is to work on business development in parks that are immediately adjacent to city infrastructure. These diversity of areas that we're pursuing now are actually of the scale that's called for in the Comprehensive Economic Development Plan. And through a process of just, I don't know, persistence, we've shifted or widened the attention away from just the big, you know, larger parks that remove from the city, and broaden the spectrum to continue to pursue that project, but to give greater priority to the more doable projects that are closer to the city, that won't cost us money and don't have as many obstacles for us in terms of potential cost. Once those sites are identified and we plot them out, they become very attractive in terms of opportunities. We don't have to own the land for them to be compelling to investors. I'm very pleased that we're starting to focus closer to home.
Thank you. Joe Gejer.
Sure. Definitely, the areas we currently have that already have services to them are much more attractive for us to be able to even promote, to draw businesses into them. But to actually look at the root of your question around, how do we create a park or promote a park where we don't have the basic infrastructure in place right now? I've had, I've seen this done elsewhere, actually, through my, it is part of my professional career, where other cities that are in a similar circumstance also create a plan around, how do we partner with a larger business that would be willing to come in and help with part of the, of the cost? But before we can explore an option like that, we have to actually sit down first and put together that plan, because no one's going to come in here without us having something that we can offer to draw them to do that.
Thank you. Our next question, and we will begin with Joe Gejer. When you look at the city's budget, how do you determine where adjustments can be made?
Fair question. Had an opportunity recently, actually, when council was looking at the levy themselves, I also made sure I got a copy of that packet, went through it. And really, you need to take a look at what the long-range plan is for the city, too, because budgeting is done on a year-to-year basis, but you have to be looking anywhere from two to five years, or even further at times down the road, to know what's coming up at you in a couple of years. You know, we've, we've got some items that we know are going to be hitting us within the next couple of years, and even this year, with respect to labor negotiations. We know that there's going to be some additional change there that we need to account for already. But it's really having that forward-looking vision to make sure that you're looking at those things. And those should help to then inform the areas that you actually look at to make adjustments as needed.
Thank you very much, Suzie Nakassian.
Well, I think that's a very helpful answer. Looking forward is definitely helpful. For the immediate year, I have, I have had hunches and found myself wrong. And it's taught me to ask my staff. Our city staff is excellent, and the best way to know where to carve is to talk to each of the department heads and explore from a staff level what their recommendations are. To try to do that without their input would be folly. They know the best way to manage their departments, and their recommendations, in my experience, have been very helpful. So for the immediate year, I think I would go first to the department heads and get their recommendations for short-term cuts, if necessary.
Thank you. We'll have a little fluffy question here. And we'll begin with Suzie. What books have you read that have influenced or inspired your thoughts about community or the governance of city?
Good one. Two books, two books. Doris Curran's Goodwin on the Team of Rivals, and the masterful example of Abraham Lincoln in working with people to broaden a perspective and develop allies. Life is too short, not to. More immediate to cities, I very much enjoyed Peter Kagayama's Love of Cities book. I think council member Pownell also read that book and commented on it. There are a number of great books that I've read about strong communities, building good communities, community engagement. But what I like about that thesis, which is now being read by the Arts and Culture Commission, is that he singles in on the idea of surprise and delight in a community. The simple human fact that if you're surprised and delighted by something, you're going to want to come back to it. And to my mind, that's what Northfield has accomplished. We have become a city that surprises, it delighted you, I bet you'll come back. So we need to focus systemically on what can we do to encourage that kind of philosophy of governance.
Thank you. Joe Gejer.
I don't know if that's so much a fluff question. No, for me, actually, most of the reading that I tend to do, unless it's just for enjoyment, happens to be more for work and business-type things. But one book that I think does have some application to city governance as well is From Good to Great. And really, what it's around is building processes, building upon what you already have, and getting better at those things that are your strengths, and then also looking at where your weaknesses may lie, and figuring out how you're going to address those. Because as you address both sides of the issue, you're going to get better any way you look at it, whether it's in business or in government.
Thank you. And we will begin this question with Joe Gejer. What is the key to civil discourse on the council?
Listening. I think it starts with that. If, if you're busy talking, you know, your mouth's working, the ears aren't working, and I think you need to listen, and not just listen, but hear what the individuals had to say first. I don't, and none of us do have the expectation that they're ever going to agree on everything, be it on council or any other body. And that's part of what makes it work, is the varying opinions. But it only works if we actually give the different opinions validity by actually hearing what the people have to say and engaging in a good conversation. And perhaps, at the end of the day, you end up agreeing to disagree. But if you can't at least take that first step, you're never going to get anywhere. And that's just going to create animosity with the individuals who feel like they're not being heard.
Thank you. Suzie Nakassian.
That would be my answer, too. I've been surprised on the council, my experience is actually the council listens very carefully and well to one another. And I think that is the secret to really, I always say about my role in the council, I'm the middle child in a family, and my role is always to sort of look around and listen carefully and see what middle places you can pursue for everybody. I'm trained as a therapist, and I've been surprised at how the listening of a therapist sort of, I don't want to take that further than I need to there, but the ability to listen is, really comes in handy here. But beyond genuine interest and, interest in listening to one another, and the ability to feel secure in taking it in and being influenced, I think that a structure is needed that respects a minority opinion and values the pros and the cons of any decision and holds them all in esteem. There are no winners and losers on our decisions.
Thank you. Continuing with that, why do you think there, and we'll begin with Suzie. Why do you think there is what appears to be a disconnect between the council and the boards and commissions?
Well, we're working on that disconnect, if there is one. We've instituted a schedule of having annual reports, or bi-annual reports, by the commissions to the council. And we're thinking about that liaison piece. But as I said before, I think that the real disconnect for me, what I would like to see us do is integrate the input of the boards and commissions into the goal-setting of the city council. And to do that on the calendar, so that we get that input in enough time to really take it in. And for instance, here from the Environmental Quality Commission, these are the goals that we set up in our brainstorming session. These are our priorities. Take them into consideration. To get those from all of the boards and commissions in time to really inform our goal-setting, we'll allow for an alignment, that then we can set our goals and then go back to those commissions and say, we heard you, and we want you to be doing this, and then we want you to come back and talk to us about it. So a coordinated goal-setting and strategizing is what I would hope we'd see in the next term.
Thank you. Joe Gejer, same question.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Why do you think there is what appears to be a disconnect between the council and the boards and commissions?
I think there appears to be a disconnect, because in some cases, there is a bit of a disconnect. We do have some things in the, in place in the city right now to try and help create some communication. And right now, it's semi-annual work sessions, so we get the opportunity on the Planning Commission to sit down with the council for, twice a year, for, I think the last one was maybe just shy of an hour. We don't get any significant fruitful conversation done in there. We give some real high-level, here's what we've had an opportunity to do so far in the last six months, and we get, good job, and keep up the good work, and away we go. But there's no real sit-down, here are our issues, here are the things we're dealing with, here's what we like about what you're doing, here's what we don't like about what you're doing. We don't get that. And unfortunately, I think that's a piece that's really missing and that we could really use.
Thank you. Now onto something more about budgets here. Regarding the recent tax levy, what is your opinion about this? Given our current financial state, would you vote for the maximum if that decision was required today? If not, then what rate would you support? for the maximum if that decision was required today? If not, then what rate would you support? And we'll begin with Joe Gejer.
Sure. Actually, I believe this was the answer to a question for one of the other things that we, we were asked to submit a while back, too. But my position on it is, is that we should have set a flat levy for this year. I understand that it was an initial levy that was set by council, and that it gives us, that's the max, and we can still go down from there. But the reality is, where we're at right now with our general fund balance, and, and the city is financially very healthy, best practices for a general fund balance is to maintain between 35 and 50% of your revenues within that balance. And right now, we're on the high side of that. Even with some of the unknown information, such as labor negotiations, I believe there was enough information that was provided at the time that needed to be done around the initial levy that we could have made the decision at that point to go flat, and still been able to absorb some of the things that were a little bit unknown, and still have a healthy balance by the end of the year.
Thank you. Suzie Nacassian.
Well, I support our working toward a zero increase in the levy. And I hope I get there. I also support policymaking that's based on facts. And the way our budget works, we simply don't have the reports. I think there's some confusion in the press and in editorials that I've read that misunderstand the word preliminary. We've set a preliminary budget. Until we know what the situation is, it would be folly to set a budget until you have the facts. I agree with Joe that my hunch is, I was looking at the situation and our balance, is that we will make it okay to a 0% levy, but it wouldn't be sound policymaking to state that for some, for what, a political reason? Like, say, I support a 0% levy when I don't have the facts? So I hope we'll get there. And we do look very good for this year, even with the stepped-up rates of our street repairs, I think we'll get there. But, so I support it, and I hope we'll get there. Simply don't have the facts quite yet.
All right. We'll begin this next question with Suzie Nacassian. Do you agree that there is a need for improving pedestrian and bicycle crossings, and what are your thoughts on moving forward with solutions?
I absolutely do agree. And as people probably know, I've been very active in the community promoting discussion about connections for bicyclists for many reasons: for health, for economic development, for recreational tourism, for the youth of our community. So yes, I do think we've got a lot of work to do, and I've done a lot of work studying the, the subject. I've been, I was excited, right in this very room, we had a Bike Friendly Communities meeting with MINDOT, with their presentations on best practices. And data show that bikable communities are vibrant economic communities, and that the Gen Y generation that will be our future business owners are looking for bikes, transit, and internet connections. So to develop that infrastructure makes a great deal of sense for Northfield. I don't know what you mean by, I have ideas about specific connections, but that's what I'd say for now. This makes good economic sense for the Northfield community.
Thank you. Joe Gejer.
Sure. I actually had the opportunity to attend the same event that Suzie was talking about. And one of the things that I remember being brought up was Bemidji is a community that, as an example, had a lot, was very bikable. And it just so happened that that afternoon, I was taking my son up there for his college visit. So I actually made a point of looking around the community to get some ideas as well. And one of the things that I found up there is that it didn't take a lot to make the community connected and bikable. In a lot of, in a lot of places, it was bike trails already in existing street right-of-ways where it made sense. But the, the bigger thing that I noticed up there was signage. You can put, you can put a bunch of paint on the street all you want, but if you don't have signage to help direct the people that don't live in this community where your trails are going to go, the only people that are ever going to know where your trails are are the people that live here. So if we really want to make it more than just about Northfield, that's what we need to look at.
Thank you. And this is a little more detailed question, following it up. And we will begin with Joe Gejer. What are your current thoughts on improving pedestrian and bicycle crossings of Highway 3?
Sure. Well, I think we've made some good steps already with respect to increasing the sensitivity at a couple of the crossings there. I also know that the city's currently working with MINDOT on crossing at Third Street. And I think the thing we need to make sure that in that conversation that we're having with the state is that we are working towards ensuring that not only is it functional for pedestrians and cyclists, but I also think we need to make sure that it's functional for our elderly as well. We've got some individuals around town already that use the little go-karts that some of you may have seen around town, and they take them on the sidewalks, too. And I think that's one area where we, we don't look at as well. We talk a lot about pedestrians and cyclists, but as we all know, our population is aging. So what might be a couple today, 10 years from now, is going to be a lot more, and we can't lose sight of that element either.
Thank you. Suzie Nacassian.
Well, the, the best opportunity for crossing the highway is what MINDOT calls a grade-separated crossing. And that's what we tried to do with the Tiger Trail. A grade separated means you're crossing under or over the barrier of the roadway. Unfortunately, the best option for us, the, the least expensive of all of our, all of those options are very expensive. To go over or under a highway is an expensive thing. The Greenville option was the best of those, and it turned out to be not viable. I still hope that we'll be able to achieve somehow, someday, a grade-separated crossing somewhere, hopefully in the center of town. In the meantime, I'd like to see us develop articulated connections all the way down the highway corridor, from St. Olaf and even actually the, to the Waterford border, all the way down to the south of town. I'd like to connect those connections with a wider network of clearly marked trails, as Joe has very rightly said. It doesn't take much to sign them. And I hope we might engage the Soup and Cycles Bicycle Event this year to be a brainstorming about where we want those routes to be.
Thank you. And then we will begin with Suzie Nacassian. With this question, what are some new ideas you would like to bring forward to the city council?
New ideas?
New ideas.
Ooh, good. I would like to introduce, I think Northfield is underperforming as an economic marketer of our excellent city. I don't understand why our Economic Development Authority is not marketing Northfield internationally. We have a very sophisticated international community. We have ambassadors of all kinds that go to Norway, that go to the, Norway's the best example, one of the strongest economies in the world. Why aren't we hosting business conferences for international delegations from Norway to lure business here? So I would love to be able to sponsor a new ambassadors program between Northfield to lure international business, as called for in, by the way, our Comprehensive Economic Development Plan. A little bit more aggressiveness on the part of the EDA would be a good thing right there. I would also like to do what we can to market our gem. The center of our city is this quiet gem, and that's Malto Mill. We've been making Farina in a, as Joe well knows, in the factory there since it was founded. And we ought to be marketing that that's our town, that's our city, that's our company. I hope we might work with Malto Mill to see how we might co-market their success and ours.
All right. Joe Nacass, uh, Joe, whoa, Joe Gejer.
So as far as new ideas are concerned, it's actually more of a warmed-over, not quite existing idea that we keep coming up with. But I am still a believer that we need to look at, how do we make ourselves more attractive to businesses? So in some respect, marketing to, more locally. A lot of the businesses that we, you know, other than commercial, that are going to serve people directly here, but I'm talking more manufacturing-type organizations, they're looking for infrastructure that I think we've already got in place here. We just don't do a very good job of making sure that it's clearly defined, you know, with respect to connectivity out to the highway. A lot of people come in and they see us as essentially landlocked from the interstate, when I think if we got creative around that, we could help open ourselves up and make ourselves a little bit more attractive to bring those organizations in here.
Thank you. And we will begin this next question with Joe Gejer. What obligation does the sitting council have to support plans that were adopted by previous councils? For example, the Comprehensive Plan, Economic Development Plan, Streetscape Task Force, Gateway Plan, and others?
That's actually a good question, too. I'm, I think what council has an obligation to do is they have an obligation to look at what's in front of them now, and if something, a decision that was made, you know, if it was made last year, in all likelihood, it, the thought process behind it is still valid. But if, as you start to get further back, you know, something that was made 10, 15 years ago, I think we should expect our counselors to at least look at it and question it in the context of today's lens. Is it still applicable to the community today? And if not, they should feel empowered to be able to make those types of changes. Otherwise, we become a stagnant community, and before you know it, you're living 15 years in the past because you feel some unrealistic obligation to stick with it because somebody at some point in time thought it was the right thing to do, but it doesn't apply to today.
All right. Suzie Nacassian.
I'm a big believer in plans. I like them. I like the community process that leads to them. And as a member of the council, I've been an advocate for our reading those plans and being active in reviewing them. I went as far as to take the land use principles from the comp plan and laminating them and putting them on the dais so that each of us would remember that that's the plan that's supposed to be guiding our decisions. Plans are, if they're good ones, and ours are, our Comprehensive Economic Development Plan, our Master Park, Park and Trail Plan, our Comprehensive Plan are fresh and helpful. They're like the keel on a boat. And if you take them seriously and keep your weight there, you're going to get somewhere. Without them, you're kind of, well, we're going to go over here, and then we're going to go over there, and where are we going to go next? So I'm, I'm a very systematic thinker when it comes to planning. I absolutely find that they, believe that they are, we are obligated to follow those plans. We also have an obligation to keep reviewing them and make sure that they stay fresh. But just because I didn't vote for them doesn't mean that I'm not responsible for carrying them out.
Thank you. And the next question, it's kind of relating to Tiger Trail, and comparing that to improving the city parks. If you were given the opportunity to spend, let's say, a dollar, how much of that would you go, would go towards city parks, and how much would go towards trails of that dollar? Would it be like half of it?
Is the question to me?
Yes. We'll, we'll begin with Suzie.
I don't know. I, I don't know that. I, I think the way to answer that question would be to look at all of the park, I'd like to see the park board be more systematic in their comprehensive planning, strategic planning, so that I could see all the projects that are needed, and not be in the position of just responding to this one or maybe that one, depending on the whims of the group. The skateboard park is a good example. It came forward, this should have been part of a strategic plan of our own park board. Similarly, the dog parks should be integrated as a part of a plan. If I had that total population of ideas that the park board has for what they want, I'd have a better sense of how to spend that dollar. Same goes for trails. We have an excellent select start on trails. I know we have a long way to go. So I dare say, a lot of the dollar would be spent on that connection. But we need a wider picture from the park board. I would say both are essential for community well-being and our quality of life in Northfield.
Thank you. Joe Gejer.
Sure. You know, as far as the dollar's concerned, how you divide that dollar up, I think goes back, and I would agree with Suzie on this one, you know, you got to have a plan, and it needs to fit into that. But before I take that dollar and I split it between the trails and the parks, I take a portion of, for new, I take a portion of that off and set it aside for the maintenance. Because whatever we buy today, we need to maintain it tomorrow, and for quite some time down the road. If we want to have it continue to be as functional as it was from the first day that we did the ribbon cutting on whatever it was that we're looking at. So I, I think that needs to be accounted for in this. And that unfortunately, all the planning we do, unfortunately, doesn't take that element into it, into account nearly as much as it really should be. It's a total cost of, of, of life cycle for this. It's not just the cost for today, it's the cost 20 years from now.
Thank you. All right. We'll begin with Joe. Are you concerned about burnout as top-level positions are combined? For example, library and IT service, or tech service?
Sure. I think burnout in any kind of organization where you start to look at combining functions is a very real concern. I, I think it's something that, actually, when you're looking at combining it, you really should be doing a workload analysis on these individuals first, or the position, I guess, is the best way to put it, to make sure that you're not taking something that's already a full-time job and making it something that you're never going to succeed at on a 60-hour work week, on a, on a good week. You are going to lose good people if you do that. And quite frankly, I don't think it's the way we should be treating our employees either. We need to be realistic about what we expect people to do, and look at it that way.
Thank you. Suzie Nacassian.
I'm very concerned about it, very concerned. I think that the, the, there were mergers that were made as, as an emergency measure by the city in order to make it through the LGA cuts of the last economic period, which I hope is now over. And I, you know, this is in tension with that question about the zero level, zero levy. In the next term, I would like, I've already, in the last meeting advocated, a good example, economic, community economic development. You can't run a race with half a horse. And not that our, you know, you've got two people working sort of part-time on Community and Economic Development Director. We need a full-time designated Economic Development Director. And we had that, and we need to restore that. That's a good example. I think the two people that are there are doing excellent job, but it's, it's too hard to focus on two things at the, you know, at the same time. So I am very concerned about it, and I hope that we can restore the city staff, particularly as our city's getting more sophisticated in the demands on our staff. We need to be addressing that problem.
Thank you. All right. We've got one more question. In public life, who is your role model? And we'll begin with Suzie.
I was thinking, I, my role model. I'm kind of a new role model. I've been taken with Mayor Chris Coleman in St. Paul. I find his leadership style not only gracious, but kind of genuinely pastoral. He has a capacity to connect with people and his council members and commissions, his rail authority, in such a genuine way that he empowers just about everybody that he works with, and maintains his own humility while he's doing that. I found that rather remarkable. So at a local level, although that sounds kind of lofty, I think, Chris Coleman. And another, another hero of mine at a higher level was Senator Simon from Illinois, who was a visionary for his state, and someone who refused to get in a limousine. He stayed close to the ground and humble and grateful in everything he did. And that was always very moving to me.
Thank you. Joe Gejer, same question.
Well, this is going to sound a little bit on the corny side, but actually, one of my role models is my father. My father was, we grew up in a rural community on a farm, and my father was the town chairman for, for many years. And that's actually probably where I got my interest in civil service, too. But it was his leadership style of bringing the community together and getting people to focus on things that we all knew needed to be done, but nobody could really kind of quite get it moving because you couldn't quite get on the same page. And, and that was, that's something that, you know, not only stuck, it stuck with me throughout that. I guess from a leadership perspective, even though I'm not Catholic, the other person I would say is probably the Pope, the, the current one. And again, there, and it's a similar thing. He's somebody that is in a very lofty position that hasn't allowed the power and the position to really go to his head. He still maintains his groundedness as much as he can. And I think that's rather noble for the, the role that he's in.
Thank you. And this is one I always ask, and that is, you know, we've had a lot of questions, and sometimes you come to a forum and there's something you really are just dying to talk about, and nobody asks about it. So is there a question that you wish someone had asked you, because you, you really wanted to answer this question? We'll start with Joe Gejer.
Well, that's awful tempting, but... No, quite honestly, I, I guess I was, I would say that I was a little surprised, you know, we, we did talk somewhat about connectivity, but I guess it surprised me that we probably didn't get into that discussion a little bit more than what we did. But I would say, though, that, and then the other element, and I brought it up a couple of times, so that we didn't get asked about directly at all, was, was the LDC, which I guess didn't surprise me. But that would have been one that I would have liked to have had a couple of questions on, actually.
All right. Suzie Nacassian.
I think two questions I would have liked to have been asked. Our projects that I think are going to emerge in the next term, and they relate to the intercity regional passenger rail possibility for Northfield that I've been working on, and also a question relating to the future for our children, the future for our youth.
And also a question relating to the future for our children, the future for our youth. Taking the second one first, Northfield's got a fabulous school district and a not-so-fabulous record of being able to provide youth jobs here when they graduate, either from high school or college. And I volunteered with the school district to try to broaden out the workforce development initiatives in the high school to create more pathways that, besides the four-year college pathway, which is very well paved, and have found our school board extremely receptive and our school superintendent very excited about developing partnerships. And I helped to organize a meeting with the EDA in which we've engaged now the chamber and local businesses to create internships and job opportunities for our kids while they're in school.
Thank you so much. Well, now we're at that time where it's closing statements, and they have two minutes for their closing statements. And Joe, truth a lot for being the first for the closing statement.
Thank you. Time flies when you're having fun. Well, first off, I'd like to start out by thanking the League of Women Voters for having this forum and for thanking all of you, actually, for sticking it out here with us and listening to both of us go on here for the last hour. I really appreciate that. As far as what we're actually here for tonight, though, you know, we've got two individuals up here that, though, on a lot of the questions that were asked, we had similar positions. I do believe that we are two very different individuals, though, in how we approach things. And there are a couple of items that I believe that we, I actually disagree with Susie on, and some of them, I think, are actually rather critical to the role. And one of those is, you know, was actually around the question of listening on council. I actually don't think they listen to each other very well. You know, watching the council meetings online, you, and on occasion in person, you see a lot of people sitting there, they're not listening, they're looking at you potentially. But the responses that they have back and forth make it very obvious that they're not hearing what the other individual has to say. And unfortunately, that, I think, feeds into some of the animosity that people perceive on council because they're seeing that. That is something that I believe that I can help to bring forward. I'm, by nature, more of a problem solver, and as part of that, I have to listen. And I go back to that, that I believe we need to have better dialogue than I think what we're currently getting. And that is one of the things that I think separates the two of us.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susie Nacassian.
Well, I, too, want to thank the league and the audience. The Grace Webb called me to get a quote for, why do people, why should people come to these forums? And actually, sitting here, I think it really is very moving. It's not only helpful to have the opportunity to share our views, but to learn from one another and to share the company with Joe and give the example of citizens who are willing to contribute to city government. I'm grateful for the experience and inspired by it, and I thank you, and the league. I, I think it may well be that Joe and I share a lot in common. I don't know yet enough about his views to know whether we disagree. I'd look forward to knowing that. I would say for myself that I feel one of the issues where, that didn't get too much play here tonight, which bears very much, very great importance for the future of Northfield, is the question of the resolution of the Land Development Code and our city's comprehensive plan. We got closest to it when we got the question about, are we beholden to plans in Northfield? And so I'd just like to say, one of the reasons why I'd like to continue to run an office is that I'm very excited about the vision for our community's future that's articulated in the 2008 Communities Comprehensive Development Plan. I participated in the public meetings that created that plan and was very excited for the level of engagement and the ideas that were there. I, I feel that I'd like the community to have the opportunity to bring forward our locally grown vision for how we want to grow Northfield, to keep it fresh and like the community that we have now, but to grow our potential economically. We have the plan in place to do that, if we'll stay faithful to it. And I think there's very much a question here about, will we stay faithful to that plan or allow it to be hijacked? I'm all for business, but business will respond well to a clear vision that Northfield's created for our own future. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we give the candidates a round of applause, I want to make a couple of announcements. One is that people can listen to the forum online. There is the League of Women Voter Northfield Cannon Falls website that you can go to. We also want to thank the audience for being here and for asking the questions that I was able to ask. And for those who are viewing online, right now, it's been streaming live, there will be an archived edition online. I'd also like to remind audience members of the League of Women Voter Candidate Forum taking place here in the council chambers on Saturday, October 25th. It's going to be a busy day here. 9 o'clock, the Northfield School Board Candidates, 10:30, the Rice County Attorney Candidates, and 12:30, the District Two Congressional Candidates. And thank you. Now let's give them a big round of applause.[1793.41][1793.41][applause]